I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors. Can everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
United States of America, and to you for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Hannah, can you please call roll?
Ms. Payne?
Here.
Ms. Corporal?
Here.
Ms. Kane?
Here.
Mr. Kezak?
Here.
Also in attendance Township Manager Ms. Tealie Kules, Township Solicitor Mr. Esposito, Assistant Township Manager Mr. Valla, Township Engineer Mr. Kessler. Also in the back we have in attendance Chief Barterillo, Mega Boundary Director of Finance Eric Gartmire, Superintendent of Public Works Jim Ennis Director of Building and Zoning, and Paul Capera Director of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you. So announcement, our next Board of Supervisors meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, February 21st, 2023 at 7:00 PM. Next, I'm going to read a proclamation recognizing Black History Month in Middletown Township. Whereas February is observed each year as Black History Month, focusing on the contributions of African Americans in our nation's history, from the first enslaved people brought over from Africa to the African American leaders and advocates of today. And whereas the observance of Black History Month calls our attention to the continued need to battle racism and provide opportunities to gain a deeper understanding of African American history. And whereas the observance of Black History Month honors how African Americans have been instrumental in shaping our nation's history and culture, and their contributions have helped to define the character and strength of our country. And whereas Black History Month acknowledges the countless obstacles that have been overcome by African Americans to attain freedom, equality, and justice, and encourages the continued fight against systemic racism and discrimination. And whereas the African American Museum of Bucks County, now located in Middletown Township, honors the rich legacy of African American history and culture through traveling exhibits, public events, and educational programs, and has been recognized as Bucks County's official archive of African American history. And now therefore do we, the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors, hereby proclaim February 2023 as Black History Month. We are next going to call Ms. Linda Sally and Commissioner Marsagli up as they have a presentation for us about the African American Museum of Bucks County.
Good evening. It's great to be back here. Although I live in Middletown, I remember sitting up there with all of you, or before all of you. I just wanted to say that on behalf of the three Commissioners in Bucks County, we are so thrilled to be able to host the African American Museum here in Middletown Township. Around the time that I became familiar with the traveling version of the museum, I also learned that Congressman Michael Fitzpatrick had always been interested when he was a Commissioner in doing something with the Boone Farm. Anybody who lives in Middletown, or Langhorne, or the area also knows as you drive past Boone Farm, you've probably all wondered, what is the history? What are they doing with that building? What will they do with this building? So we are really happy that we have found a use for that building, a use that we believe the former Congressman would have been thrilled with, then the future will also be happy with because we have a lot to teach people. So I'd like to introduce Linda Sally to begin telling you a little bit about the plan.
Thank you. Thank you for supporting us, recognizing us. We do appreciate all of that. I'm happy to be here today. I'm going to ask my Vice President to stand with me, and Gary, to come up. They work on our board. And I'm just going to tell, because it's Black History Month, I think I should really talk about a few people that are very close to my heart that I enjoy. For my people, the author. I'm sorry. For my people, Margaret Walker. Born 1915 in Burlington, Alabama, the first African woman poet to receive the Yale Younger Poet Prize. For my people, lending their strength to the years, to the gone years, and to the now years and the maybe years, washing, ironing, cooking, scrubbing, sewing, mending, hoeing, pro- proing, digging, planting, pruning, patching, draping along, never knowing and never understanding. For my people, the story must be told. Three gentlemen from this area. Walter Jacobs, from, Walter Jacob is from Langhorne. Melard Mitchell, he's from Yardley. Harvey Spencer, Langhorne. These three men planted a seed in 12 individuals. And their dream was, one day, one day, the African American history will be taught in Bucks County. Today is that day. What a good dream this is. But if it's not watered, how good is it? Well, there was a little lady that heard about the gathering of African Americans in the First Baptist Church of Langhorne, that wanted, African Americans that wanted a museum, which was a difficult task. It was not easy. She came, she listened, but most of all, she believed in the museum and the mission that she's, and she spoke. This little lady, Joan Sadoff. She said, this is a great dream. It must happen. But we must tell the world about your being here. It was a quiet thing. It started nine years ago, 2014, in a little church called First Baptist Church of Langhorne on Richardson Avenue. She opened the hour and introduced us to the community with Standing on Our Sisters' Shoulders, which was her documentary. Then there was another lady that came that was so interested in what we were doing. Her name was Pat Mervine. Pat, will you stand, please? She wrote the book, Boone Farm and the People, a fundraiser for us to raise money for our museum. We had no idea what we were going to do or how we were going to do it. But we sat around and we discussed all the different things that we had all experienced walking this life. And we realized it was important to tell this story to everyone. So today, we are grateful for having the museum, grateful for the Commissioners who acknowledged us, who recognized our story, and called me in the middle of the night and said, Linda, I think we got a building for you. I almost fell out the bed. It was an amazing story. So here we are. So today, I'm going to introduce my Vice President, Bill Reed, and then after Bill Reed, he will introduce the next person. I thank you again.
Good evening. Thank you for having us this evening. I'm going to be like my pastor tells me on Sunday morning. I won't be long, but I do have a message. The message is simple as this. We need your help. I am a charter member of the museum. We started in 2012. In 2014, we were incorporated. We are still functioning as, as a mobile museum. But we're growing. We're on the move. We need volunteers, and most of all, we need your donations and your support. So tonight, I won't be long. I want to say to you, to members of this audience, and to this board, and to the audience, that we are still a mobile museum, but we are growing, and we need your help, and we need your support, and we need your solicitations. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm going to be like them. I'm going to be thankful. I'm going to be brief. I'm going to be gone, because I know you have a lot of business to take care of. My name is Greg Lyles, and I'm here to advise the African American Museum of Bucks County. And in my role, this is for me to work with the, with the, with the board, to develop, to raise, to bring people to the table, to raise the necessary dollars that we need to bring this museum alive. And our goal is to raise between $2.5 million in the next three to five years. And we're well on our way. We have a number of individuals that are going to support us, both on the corporate side, on the political side. And it is our hope, it is our desire, it is our dream, it's our goal, and it's our mission to raise these necessary dollars so we can continue to tell the important story of African Americas in Bucks County, not just to Bucks County, to the region and to the world. And that is our goal, that is our hope, and that is our desire, and that is what we will do. So thank you so much for allowing us to come before you to tell this important story. And I hope that folks in the room, in the county, will support us in our effort to raise this necessary dollars to bring this dream, to bring this museum alive. So thank you so, so much, and we really appreciate it.
Ms. Tealie Kules?
I just wanted to make note of two donations that were dropped off today for the museum, and to encourage anyone else who is able to do that, and also to let folks know that that book is being sold here at the Township Building. And we've had great interest in the book, so congratulations, and we want to make sure we hand these off to you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, so the next order of business is public comment. So before we move on to public comment, I believe some of you are here about the Route 1 Penn.RC Improvement Project. So I just wanted to go over a little bit of the timeline and kind of where we left things off last. So Middletown Township has been actively involved with PennDOT and their engineer, JMT, over the last several years as the design for the third phase of Route 1 Improvement Project, RC3, is refined. Middletown Township has been cooperative with PennDOT and supports the planned changes to Route 1. The proposed changes would significantly modernize the roadway from existing 1970s design to align with the current roadway design criteria, improve safety, increase efficiency in travel, and better meet driver expectations. Throughout our interactions with PennDOT over the last two years, Middletown Township has advocated for the public meeting to be held in person with a virtual option, during which the community can review and comment on the proposed plans. A joint letter was signed by Middletown Township, Langhorne Borough, and Langhorne Manor Borough, that was sent to PennDOT actually in July of 2022 with this request. We are still awaiting for PennDOT to communicate their readiness for this meeting, and once we have more details, we would advertise the meeting through regular communication channels. So with that, if there's anybody that wants to comment, please come to the front. State your name and address for the record.
Hello, I'm Fran Grous. I live at 360 Green Ridge Drive in Langhorne, and I am a Middletown resident. What I'd like to say, and I'm going to be as brief as I can, but, okay. PennDOT has plans for the Route 1 and the 413 interchange that will result in a dramatic increase in traffic. This will impact everyone traveling through Pendel, Newtown, Langhorne Manor, and Langhorne Borough, and throughout Middletown Township. We need all these communities that touch the highway to get together and discuss traffic mitigation and pedestrian safety. I attended the Supervisors meeting back on May 16th of 2022 and expressly made a request to Langhorne Manor, to the Borough, and to the Township to meet with PennDOT. So you've just indicated to me that that, that has been taken care of. Well, it hasn't come to fruition, but it's in the process of happening. So thank you for that, because I think it's important that everybody has their input. PennDOT has said their, their goal is to move the traffic, their goal is to move traffic. And it should also be the safety of our children getting to and from school, and the pedestrians' safety, for the people who are forced to walk along that highway. The community should be included in making decisions that will affect so many residents. Langhorne Borough has employed, at a cost of $20,000, a company called Safe Engineering. They have made many great suggestions for the project. They have advised that if the plan is implemented the way it has been presented so far, it would be an increase of approximately 12% more accidents. They also advised that the road that is adjacent to a major highway should not be the responsibility of the local government. So I think that was a big concern, too. Nobody wants to take responsibility for the service roads because they're afraid that they're going to have to take care of the upkeep. And according to the safety people, they're saying that's not true, that the state is responsible for those adjacent roads. So I do understand that there are separate government entities, but we're all connected by this project. So the point that I'm trying to make is that we need to collaborate together and make it work for everyone, and not just favor the Borough, or the Manor, or the Township. Everybody's got to be included in that. PennDOT is funded with our taxpayer money. Therefore, the taxpayer should have some input on what they consider to be the most beneficial to the quality of life and the safety to all of the neighbors. So, thank you.
Is there anybody else that wants to come up for a pop, public comment? Just state your name and address. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bill Everett. I'm at 286 Hidden Spring Lane in, in Langhorne. Same topic, the RC3 project. I've been reviewing the minutes from last year and the plans on the website for the, for Route 1. I have basically two observations and two recommendations from my perspective. You've addressed one of them with the letter. I wasn't aware of the letter that went out. I do think, having so much time passed between the dialogue of last May, without a meeting, I don't think the ball should be in the total court of PennDOT. I think you should try to push to make sure that meeting happens sooner rather than later. It's in the preliminary engineering phase of the project, so now is the time where the community can provide some useful input that could help shape the project to, so it's a win-win situation for everybody. This, so my recommendation would be is to try to push for that meeting from your side with the communities as soon as possible, so that there's plenty of time. The, the engineering is set to be finalized, I think, early next year, I think, by the schedule. My second observation is, I really couldn't find the details of the traffic study that supported the RC3 phase of the project. And I think it's both a traffic study and a forecast, because if you're changing the roads, the engineering has to kind of accommodate that. So I didn't find anything. If I missed it, you know, let us know. But I think that's a core ingredient of a successful project, is that the traffic study needs to be done, but it also has to be timely. So if the traffic study is five years old, I think it needs to be redone or updated. Doesn't necessarily have to be in advance of the meeting with the constituents. It could be a follow-up meeting after that. If it takes time to do the traffic study, I wouldn't wait for that in order to get the dialogue going with the, with the, with the community. So that, those are my two observations. I would suggest that the traffic study be done during the school year because of the impact of the high school along the corridor there. I think it's optimal, I think, for the traffic study. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Kevin Belmont, live at 2020 Woodburn Road, also Middletown Township. Did look at the film that they have that shows what's actually going to happen. I do agree that the lanes need to be changed, so that there's a breakdown area as far as the, the poor lane part goes. I understand what they're going to do with the access roads. They're not going to get rid of them, but they're going to change them. I don't understand why not letting the neighborhoods have access, and you're going to force all the traffic to either Langhorne, or Maple, or the high school, and they're going to put two roundabouts in, which I think is ridiculous, but that's beside the point. My concern is, is you guys approved that building that's going to be Amazon up at Reebums, and now you're going to have 42,000 cars a day? Is that what the last meeting, that's what was estimated by the engineer talking about the influx of vehicles? You're going to put 42,000 more vehicles into the center of Langhorne, and you're going to cut off access and make everybody go through 213 and Maple Avenue? I mean, I think there, there has to be some serious, you know, somebody needs to look at this whole thing for the town, for Middletown Township Borough, because it doesn't seem, PennDOT doesn't care about us. PennDOT doesn't care. All they know is they got these guys that are with degrees, and they're coming up with these cool layouts, which, and, and facts that they have to prove them, but that doesn't have anything to do with the, the way people live in Langhorne. We have to deal with this traffic every day. They don't. They come up with a design, they ship it, they get paid for it. We got to live with it. I mean, I can't imagine what Woodburn Road's going to be with the access coming out. You got the apartments at the Oxford Valley Mall that are going to be built. You got that building has, the neighborhood coming out behind the Toll Brothers place. And then you got all the traffic from the, from the new Reebam place. It doesn't make sense to me that anything's been thawed out. It's like, just do something, and we'll worry about it later. And I don't think that's a, a good way to do it. That's it.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Paul Shanahan. I live at the Bellevue Avenue exit of US 1 North. 507 Bellevue Avenue is in the township. However, the plan the Borough puts out is right into my building. I live at 507. I also own 501. If you notice coming around the corner, there's white rocks in front of the building at 501. That's because all the cars coming off that highway have no traffic slowdown at all. They, the people from out of town try to make that turn at 50 miles an hour, and they take out the stop sign, they take out the fire plug, and they run into my house. And without that barrier of the 50 mile an hour going to 40 miles an hour, if they take that away, and it's, you know, it's a 70 mile an hour highway. It's not a 55 mile an hour highway, even though it's marked that. There is, it's going to be a death sentence trying to get off at 413 and Bellevue Avenue if that highway is open. So the plan that the, that the Borough came up with, in my opinion, is crazy, but that's just my opinion. And I just can't see a way to keep that Bellevue Avenue exit open if that's the plan. I mean, something's got to change there. And the PennDOT plan is driven, has to be changed, probably, like you say, for the Borough traffic and stuff like that. But as far as that exit goes, like I say, it's a death sentence the way it is now. And it'll get worse if that barrier separation between 40 miles an hour and 55 mile an hour isn't there. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other public comment on non-agenda items before, before I move on? Oh, go ahead.
My name is Ann Schaefer, and I live at 849 West Gillum Avenue in Langhorne, Middletown Township, at the intersection of Park Vale and Gillum. Gillum Avenue, from one end to the other, is a major school bus route. At every other corner, every morning, from 7:30 to 2:30, there are students that have to wait for the bus. And a major is right out front, and I see them in the morning, particularly now. The high school, they're very early. And, and the fact that the access road, the superhighway access road, will be closed at Park Vale, that traffic to get through Langhorne there, or they're going to run from one angle of Gillum Avenue all the way down to Old Lincoln Highway. Right now, we have called the police department several times because of the speeding that occurs at that intersection. And if they shut down the access road, it's only going to make more people do the cutoff on Gillum Avenue. And to be quite honest, I've been a resident here, I've been here for 60 years. And I really haven't seen a lot in the papers or anything to let us residents know exactly what's going on. You hear a little bit here, a little bit there. And all I see is they're now ready to tear down the islands that were between the access and the big highway. They're now removing that whole section down, right by the railroad bridge. So I just want to voice my opinion, so I can just say I did what I did. And hope somebody's listening, and we could, maybe we could. I thought this was going to be a meeting with PennDOT tonight. And they're a no-show, apparently since last May. And they're just plowing along. I don't see where anything is being slowed down for us. So I'm asking you if there's anything you can do to inform us, or tell us what we have to do, who we have to write to? I'm, I'm getting old, but I can still voice my opinion, and I, I thank you for my, my time.
Thank you.
I'm Bernadette Hart, 368 Tarryton Drive. I'm listening that you said the letter, the request to meet with PennDOT was put out in May. It is now February, and the construction you can see every day is creeping slowly northward. We have asked you all to do this, to work on our behalf, to intercede with us for PennDOT. You have the power. We need you to do something for the community. We all object to this. What are you all going to do for us?
Any other public comment on non-agenda items? State your name and address. Thank you.
I'm Pat Mervine. I live at 960 Langhorne Yardley Road. I'm here about the project. I'm really concerned because we haven't had an opportunity to share our opinions, so I really do appreciate that a letter was written, and I really do hope, like everyone else has said, that that's followed up on, because we need to have an opportunity to express our concerns. express our concerns. I live on Langhorne Yardly Road. I have a son who lives in Langhorne Borough on Hill Avenue. I go to Middletown Friends Meeting, I do business in town, and the way I go is to go right past here, up on the superhighway, take the access road, and then go into Langhorne that way. By doing that, I can be anywhere I need to go, very quickly, very safely. If that access road is closed, what I will have to do, and everyone else like me, will be to go onto 213 and sit in that traffic for hours. I have taken that road by mistake at times to go into town, and realized that a five-minute trip has now turned into a half-hour trip, causing frustration, burning gas, adding to the pollution, and just making a mess of the traffic, backing it up even as far back as Dunkin' Donuts, I've seen it. So those access roads are really a relief valve, and I don't think that PennDOT is looking at it that way. I don't think that they're looking at it from the perspective of people who live here, who have to navigate this area, and who have found a safe, quick, and efficient way to do it by using that access road. If they take out those very wide barriers that they have, and make them small barriers with the metal barrier like they have through the center, that would protect those lanes, and would give them sufficient area to create the shoulder that they feel is need for safety, which I totally agree. If they do something at the blinking light, put a roundabout in there to help that, because we all know how bad that is, that would be great. But the idea of building clover leaves, taking homes, doing all this construction, and closing off the access road seems very counterproductive, and, and not helpful at all to mitigating the traffic. Another thing that can be done, which was brought up in, in Langhorne Borough meetings, and I hope that it's something that will be supported by Middletown, is changing signage. If you start changing signs and encouraging cars, but especially trucks, who are coming up from Route 1, heading toward Newtown, to just take 95, or 295, as it's called now, it's so much faster to go that way than to have all of the traffic going through Langhorne and backing up on the way to St. Mary. I mean, it, it gets to be ridiculous at times, but if, if the signage is changed, so that people are then encouraged to take 95 and get off at Newtown, it's just so much faster, and would really help again to alleviate some traffic. So thank you for listening, thank you for attempting to get PennDOT to the table with all of the stakeholders, and we hope that you'll continue that effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on non-agenda items, before we move on?
Hi, my name is Nancy Lyons. I live at 302 Blue Bell Avenue, and I also own the property at 310 Blue Bell Avenue. I don't know if I'm supposed to speak now, or am I supposed to wait till number nine, other business? This has nothing to do with their traffic thing or anything, this is my own issue. So should I wait for other business, or speak now? Okay, last July of, I believe, 2020, a man on Cedar Avenue asked, put in for a subdivision, where he wanted to whack off his backyard and build another house. There was a Skype meeting, or a Zoom meeting, whatever you call it, I'm not very computer-wise. The neighbor was kind enough to invite me to their house. There's four neighbors that are concerned of this little stretch of Blue Bell Avenue, which is a cartway, it's been that way for 40 years or more. We had this Skype meeting with the different people, I don't think it was any of you folks, but at the end of the meeting, Mr. Patrick Ennis said that we would continue this later, and the two neighbors that were present at the time vehemently, vehemently opposed anything going on. Now somehow, another meeting was called, and the four families on Blue Bell Avenue were not notified. Now someone has told me that that's a, I don't know what the word is, I'm sorry. It's, it's just something that you can tell us if you want to, it's, but I've been told of everything that's been going on in my neighborhood for the 40 years I've lived there. I actually have a letter that someone either put in my mailbox or mailed to me from the township, that somebody wanted to make their detached garage into a granny flat. At that time, I drove by the property, I looked at the detached garage, I saw no threat to my neighborhood or my property, none of my business, I can, and I didn't, and I continued on. Now this man that wants to build this house in his backyard, is coming out on Blue Bell Avenue, which is a very quiet little dirt road, gravel road, with four houses on it. The other day, so the last thing Mr. Ennis said, that the whole thing would be continued, that was two years ago, I never gave it another thought. A week or the, maybe two weeks ago, I come home to see the whole little road, all stakes and pink little flags all over everything. Naturally, I called the township. They don't know anything about it. I come up to the township, I speak with Mr. Jim Ennis, and he tells me that it's all been approved. I said, how could it possibly be approved, when the four people that live on that road were not notified of a meeting, were told there was going to be a meeting? I don't think that's the right way to do business in Middletown Township or anyplace else. So what I'm saying is, I want to know the reason why, why the four of us were left out of the loop, and I want to know how this man got all these variances. Now the problem is, that for 40 years, I've had a retirement plan in place. My retirement plan was to subdivide my property, which has been subdivided since 1989. Anybody buying on that street can look at the public records and know, that's the only building lot on that street. Now this other man snuck this building in, without conferring with us, after we went to the first meeting and said we were all against it. And now, in September, I decided to sell my lot. I got an offer of $240,000 for my lot. Clap, clap for Nancy. Thank you. So now, the people that come to, to look at the lot, and also I showed Mr. Jim Ennis the text from the realtor, a local guy, saying he had three people ready to come and look at the lot. I decided on my own, that because of those four neighbors, and how peaceful and quiet is where, where we live, that I would try to sell the lot myself, and get the perfect tenant, you know, owner, somebody older, no teenagers, no partiers, just get a grip on the feeling that I would sell my lot to somebody that wasn't going to cause a problem on our street. Now the people came back to look at it, they see all these stakes, when they came to look at the first time, they see a hill, the deer running up the hill, looks like a great place to live, everybody wants to buy it. My retirement plan is in place. Now nobody wants to buy it, because they have no idea what's going on, on that other lot. So now my retirement plan has been stopped by a person that just wants to invent a building lot where there isn't any. And again, we all vehemently opposed it, and we were just overlooked, we were left out of the whole circle. Now, the man has come, the new guy, cut down all these trees in our, in our road that nobody wanted, cut down, and the township didn't even have the courtesy to put a little note in my mailbox and say, on the, whatever the day was, that there would be a construction team there. So then I come home to that, which I think is, you know, you have time to send all other things out, why weren't we notified that was something was going on? And how did this thing get passed, when the four people that live on that street don't want any part of it? Would anybody here like to come home and find a wrecking crew in your yard, cutting your trees down?
I can give the board some feedback on this, Mrs. Lyons, if you'd like.
Okay, should I sit down?
No, no, you can stay.
Okay, thank you.
It doesn't matter, I just, you know, I, I understood that there was a chance you might come, so I did a little investigation. I know that you have a right-to-know request that's pending, so we are working on that. There was a 2013 zoning hearing, meeting, so you should have been notified of that if you lived there. There is a state law that requires people within a certain distance to be notified. In 2013, the property owner received a number of variances, that then led to the property owner coming forward with a subdivision plan in 2020. At that point, as many of you remember, the state required that we hold our meetings remotely, so we did have meetings on Zoom at that point. There was a notification of that. We do notify for the Planning Commission, again, we're not required to notify for the Planning Commission, but we do. That eventually came to the Board of Supervisors, I think the following, I think it was October 2020, maybe, Jim, am I right, October 2021?
August 2020.
Okay, August 2020, it was approved by this board. And so that meeting was potentially a Zoom or a hybrid meeting at that point. But as far as notification, the township did fulfill its obligation to notify for both the zoning hearing board, as well as the Planning Commission. That person who was leading the department at that time is not here. I can certainly try to find out what happened between the first presentation at the Planning Commission, and the second. We wouldn't re-notify people if something was being continued to the next meeting. We wouldn't send out a new notification, because the residents were notified of the first meeting. But it has been, in our board meeting minutes, it did take a while for this person to go through the whole development agreement process, and, you know, put all of their financial security in place, and it is now at the building permit stage in Arab Department of Building and Zoning. When you receive your right-to-know request, you'll have all of the information related to that building permit. But it is a subdivision that came completely through the process, according to the Pennsylvania Municipality's Planning Code.
But my question is still the same, when Mr. Patrick Ennis told us on the Zoom meeting, that it was going to be continued, and he'd be in touch, there was no in-touch?
I'll, I'll have to look into that. I'll have to look into that meeting, but my guess is, my, my guess is that it was continued to the next meeting.
And even though you had notified us all along, that you felt no need to notify four families that told you they didn't want any parts of that subdivision?
Again, I don't know that answer, but I can certainly look into it.
All right, well that's why I'm here, to try to clear the air and find out. But I feel that someone's pushed their way through, when four families that live there vehemently opposed it, constantly said they didn't want any parts of it, and now, nobody even tells us. So what's the next step? You know, what I want to know, and I did file the right-to-know, and on my right-to-know order, it says they'll, it'll take them till March 30th to get back to me. Seems like a long time to need to know.
We asked for an extension, because the file is this thick, and we need to go through and make sure there's anything.
All I want to know is, what is going on in front of my house? And I think, as a taxpayer, and as the one lady said, I've lived in Middletown Township for 68 years, I have no other, I have never used any other address than Middletown Township, paying taxes on two properties, and I feel that I should be told what is going on outside my front door.
Well, you can, you can certainly come in, and we can unroll the plan and show it to you. I have, you don't have to wait till March 30th.
Yeah, and I don't want to sit on the edge of my seat.
To come in and meet with Jim Ennis or I, either one of us can sit down and show you the plan. Your right-to-know request asked for voluminous information, so it has to be sifted through.
Yeah, I didn't want all that, I want to know how I was left out of the loop, when the whole thing came up to be discussed again, after I went down on record, and I have the minutes there, if anybody cares to see them.
Between the first meeting of the Planning Commission, and when they were back before it to be rehearsed.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
When they were in front of the Planning Commission the first time, one of the things that was brought up by that commission, and the residents on the call, was the Blue Bell Avenue, and, and how it was undersized, in particular for some of the history with the emergency access, and the fire department to get back there. So one of the things they had them look at, to come back before the Planning Commission, was to coordinate with the Fire Marshal, also for Blue Bell Avenue, which is the paper street. They needed to finalize and coordinate access agreements, to have any kind of improvements done along that road. And that's what finalized the process of them reaching the Board of Supervisors. Once they addressed those things, adequately upsized Blue Bell Avenue on their plan of what they desired to do, so that it was a safer access for emergency and, and those kinds of vehicles to get back to the homes there, then they had their final approvals. Where they are now, is that they're proposed some modifications with, where they widen, or proposing the wide Blue Bell Avenue. They had a short retaining wall, they're looking to revise that to be more of a stabilized slope. Because they're looking to change some of that, it's back before my office, and also the Building and Zoning Department, to look at what their designer's proposing for that, before they can move forward with anything. What they've done out there thus far, is ask that they can remove some of the dead ash trees that are in that area for the widened Blue Bell Avenue, and that's, that's what you've seen out there. The stakeouts are per the approved plans they have, but as far as moving forward with any other work, they're still in the process of proposing a slight modification to what they had on their approved plan.
But I'm still saying, I don't know how the plan got approved, when the four families that live on Blue Bell Avenue said they wanted no parts of another house being on Blue Bell Avenue. I had a letter from the realtor.
As I mentioned, they went through the process of finalizing the agreements to utilize the paper street there. I'm sure that'll be part of the right-to-know information in the file, that the project has over the years. So I, I don't think it's a case where anything was passed by in the dark. I think it's a matter of just discovering those documents, so we can clarify that for you. But that was one of the items that they had to address, was coordinating agreements to make those improvements on Blue Bell Avenue, per the recommendations of the, the Fire Marshal and the Township staff.
Well, I, I just really don't think it's the right thing, when four families that live there don't want another house there. I, at the Zoom meeting, I wrote a letter from a realtor, saying it was devaluing my property, and now, as I said, it's totally derailed my retirement plans of selling that lot. So here's one man, doesn't want to go out and spend his money to buy a lot, and build a house on a, on a lot, and there's plenty of lots for sale. There's two behind my yard right now, on Wisteria, that people know are building lots, and houses are going to be put on there. For somebody to take their backyard, it's not bothering that man, there's seven cars go up and down my little Blue Bell.
Well, I think with the right-to-know information that we're putting together to provide, I think it'll be beneficial to discuss it further then. I, I think with all the information, it'll be more clear.
Okay, well, could somebody put me on the mailing list, or something, so I'm, I don't have to, I don't have a computer, I'm not computer literate, I don't have time to sit down every day to see what plans you people are making? As I said, I, I have.
The township is, they have a designer for their proposed development, so that, that's the plans they're preparing for the township to review, and the right-to-know request that you have, that'll, that'll provide the information back to you. There's no, there's no additional notifications that go out.
Yeah, but I still don't even see, I don't understand how it got to this point already.
As the manager explained, it went through the whole land development process, over the course of a few years. But like I mentioned, I think it'll be beneficial, once all that information's together, it'll be a little more clear of what the next steps are to expect as well.
All right, and if you are planning on doing any more construction, I tell you what we need right now is signage. There's been a steady flow of traffic, disrupting our lives, going back and forth, instead of the seven cars that go up and down that little gravel path every day. I'd like you to put up signs, not a through street, no outlet, private road, but you have to put some signage up, because we're having gawkers come down, turning around in my driveway, turning around in my neighbors.
The township does communicate with their contractor.
Part of me.
The township does relay and communicate with their contractor, when they're looking to start. The township isn't the one doing the work. They have a contractor for their, the building that they're proposing for their approved plans.
Yeah.
So the township, when they have their pre-construction, and, and they move forward with any kind of development, as with any project in the township, we communicate with their contractor as they start a project, and make sure that they're following all your orders.
Okay, who's in, who's in charge of signage? I've been.
Their contractor.
Oh, they're, they're to put up a sign that says no outlet, private drive, all that they're supposed to put up?
It would be for any construction-related activity, they would, they would provide the materials and signage.
I'm speaking of now, while the gawkers are coming to drive down and look. They're turning around in people's yards, that don't want them turning around in there. Is that, if the township can't come along and put a sign up saying no outlet, so people don't drive down there?
We can follow up with any of the workers out there, for sure. So, yeah, we'll take that and follow up with the folks that are looking to be working there.
Okay, so when could I expect to see a sign there, so this traffic stops?
Well, we'll have to coordinate that, so I don't have a, a date of, I don't have the sign myself.
All right, would you give a round of applause for that? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments on non-agenda items only?
Jim Flynn, 259 Aspen. And in regard to this lady's request here, we do have a Citizens Traffic Commission, which I'm a member of, and Bill here, and Nick is the chair. If you have, like, problems, come on over and see us for, you know, at our meetings, and then, it's taken very seriously, there's policemen there, there, it's a whole board, and we would try to mitigate that for you. No, I mean, we, we could try to help you, you know? We have no, like, governing, but we could bring it to the front.
Do you have a sign you could put up?
Yes, stick one on your lawn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to move on to the consent agenda part of the meeting. So I will accept a motion for approval of the consent agenda item as stated on the agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. So the next thing on the agenda is consideration of authorizing the purchase of breaching tools for all police vehicles in the amount of $16,384.74. Chief Bartarilla?
Good evening, Ms. Payne, fellow board members. The following two purchases were actually approved at the August Capitol Budget Meeting. The first are the breaching tools. These are valuable lifesaving tools for our police department. The breaching tools allow officers the ability to make entry into locked or secure buildings or other structures where time is of the essence. They are lighter weight, have the ability to be carried by the officers longer distances if needed, and are basic in operation. Will all be trained in their use, and one set will be placed in each patrol vehicle. So if the board has any other questions, we did answer a lot of the questions at the Capitol meeting in August. If you have any further questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Seeing as there's no questions, I'll accept a motion.
Move to authorize the purchase of 35 JTC cloth thirties and 35 JTC cloth ghostlings in the amount of $16,384.74 to be paid out of the Capitol Fund.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seeing a third motion and a second, are there any questions before we move on from the board? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next is consideration for authorizing the purchase of Vitra V100 LE Firearms Training Simulator System in the amount of $54,356.96. Chief?
Yes, and this training simulator is actually going to be fitted into our indoor range. Our indoor range hasn't really been updated since the building was built in over 20 years. We have an opportunity to make this purchase. It's a valuable training tool. It also doesn't require our officers to have to leave the building for training. It also makes our facility available to outside police departments, the four boroughs and neighboring departments, if they want to use it. This is basically a simulator that puts all of us through different challenging simulations, including active shooter and other different scenarios, helps to sharpen our skills and prepare us if we ever have to actually face that on the street. And as I said, it's a valuable training tool for us, and it's also going to be beneficial for some of our partner police departments as well. I think it's an excellent investment for the price. The time is right with the cost of things going up. We did discuss this in detail in August. If you have any more specific questions, Captain Feeney's here. He's the one that put the purchase together. He can answer any of, if you have any technical questions about it, or if you have any other questions for me, I'd be happy to answer.
Any board questions? Seeing no questions, I'll accept a motion.
I move to authorize the purchase of the Vitra V100 LE system for $54,356.96 to be paid out of the Capitol Fund.
Seeing a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Seeing a motion and a second, are there any board questions? Any questions from the public?
Does any other, does any other local departments have this around here? Like, I shoot over, like, classic pistol, and do they have that available?
So I don't know about a private range. I know Captain Pete knows a lot more about that. The only simulator that I know of in the county is at the training center in Doylestown. Yeah, unless-
Is that accurate?
Okay.
No, I'm happy with it.
Right.
Any other questions from the public? Seeing none, although there's been a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Consideration of authorizing the purchase of a 2023 Ford F-450 pickup truck with a plow and liftgate in the amount of $84,708.25. Mr. Gardenmire, thank you.
Good morning, good evening, board members. Once again, this was budgeted in a 2023 budget. This is the first purchase of this year for the vehicles. This truck is equipped with a plow and a liftgate. All our trucks are four-wheel drive, and this is replacing one of the older pickups, which is a 2008, I believe it is, and that's what this truck will be replacing.
Are there any board questions for Mr. Gardenmire? Nope. Seeing no questions, I will accept a motion.
I move to authorize the purchase of one 2023 F-450 four-by-four SD regular cab eight-foot box, 142-inch WBDRWXL from Chapman Ford Abortion, Pennsylvania, one sound-off signal 54-inch amber light bar from SKD Tyrons Inc., one two-way radio from Lycom Communications of Bristol, Pennsylvania, for a total of $84,708.25.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seeing there's been a motion and a second, any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Gardenmire.
I just wanted to add that this is under Crew Stars also, just so you're aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. So that brings us to "Other Business." I will start with Mr. Kessler.
Just "Go Birds," that's all I got.
Mr. Valla?
In addition to the sentiment of "Go Birds," as my colleague shared, I wanted to let the board know that the Briggs Road parking restriction that was discussed at the last meeting is expected to come before the board at the next meeting, February 21st, and as requested, about 14 notices are going to residents in that immediate area.
Thank you. Mr. Esposito?
Nothing, thank you.
Ms. Tealikels? Ms. King?
I just wanted to take a moment to thank all of you that came out and spoke about the PennDOT. We hear you. We are doing everything we can behind the scenes, talking to PennDOT, asking the right questions, looking at the traffic studies. So we are trying to gather all of the information that we can to hopefully, you know, disseminate to you guys. Again, we are taking it seriously. We're taking your feedback seriously. So I just wanted to acknowledge everyone. Thank you for coming out, and that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Kezak?
I'm going to say "Go Birds," and I'm disappointed the rest of you didn't say "Go Birds," so I expect the rest of you after me to say "Go Birds." "Go Birds," nothing else.
Ms. Corporal?
I just wanted to thank everybody for coming out tonight, and, you know, we were always listening, and I wanted to also just say, I know they left, but it was really nice to see the presentation for the African-American museum, and I think it's a really exciting thing to come to Middletown.
And I will just state, for those of you who did come about the Route One project, I just want to thank you for coming out. It's important to keep making your voices heard. Excuse me. But I also did want to reiterate, there is a new state representative for the area, Mr. Hogan, and he did give us his, we actually got a letter today, ironically, on our seats with his office information, phone numbers, and locations. So I would also urge you to reach out to him as well, since he is a state rep and this is, PennDOT is a state project. The more of us that are working together to get that information to PennDOT, to urge them to get back to us to have this public meeting, the better off we are. I'd also encourage you to reach out to former state representative, but now State Senator Frank Ferry as well, since, you know, that's state. So I just wanted to reiterate that, and if anybody wants his information, you know, phone number or anything like that, we can provide that to you. And also, "Go Birds." And with that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
I guess I'll second. Okay, you're adjourned.